Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, Abu, do you want to do the minutes?
Yeah, okay, we'll do those. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee of October 17th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2017.
Second.
Are there any corrections to be made?
Sharon Diddy Millis as well, she couldn't physically make it here tonight.
Okay.
So she's just going to watch the tape and develop the minutes for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. We'll not wait for him. Okay, all in favor? Aye. You just approved minutes.
That's what it was.
Do you want to do?
Yeah, if the committee would like to. We just have one guest in the audience tonight who's here for agenda number eight. It was approval of some of the field trips. If the board doesn't mind, we'll take that item out of order so that we can take that vote and then go home for the evening. So perhaps a motion to take item number eight out of order.
I make a motion to take item number eight out of order.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous four.
So on item number eight, there were just three field trip requests before you this evening. Two of them relate to Chelmsford High School. The first one is for the best buddies program to take a trip up to the Pheasant Lane Mall on December 14th to do some holiday shopping. The second, actually, they're all Chelmsford High School trips. The second trip is for the 11th and 12th grade French students. It'll be open to those students to travel to Paris, France from February 14th to 24th a year from now, so that's in February of 2019. And then the third trip is for Chelmsford High School students who are level two to five in the Spanish program to travel to Madrid, Spain on April 13th through 21st, again, a whole year from now in the spring of 2019. So I bring forward those trips for your approval this evening.
Are there any questions regarding to the trips? I believe that the best buddies trip is an annual, I think.
It is, yeah.
Do you want to do them all at once or just?
You could take them all in, all together.
Okay. Entertain a motion to take the three together.
I make a motion to approve the field three. I make a motion to approve the field trip requests, three of them. Number one, best buddies program, Pheasant Lane Mall, National Envision, number two, grades 11 and 12, French students, Paris, France. Number three, level two to level five Spanish students, Madrid, Spain.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. The vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous four. Okay.
You're welcome to spend the rest of the evening.
Thanks for coming.
Have a great night.
He was here in case we had any questions.
Want to go back to public comments?
Yeah.
No, there aren't any, but.
All right, no, it's not public, so we won't have public comments. Student reps, if you'd like to share with us.
So this week, starting this week, is Spirit Week for Chelmsford High School. So we'll have Spirit Days Thursday through next Tuesday. And Spirit Week also consists of the Homecoming Dance next Tuesday, as well as a Book and Can Drive. And this all leads up to Pep Rally, which is next Tuesday, which is just like a celebration for the football team, which they're having their game next Thursday. Yeah. And another part of Spirit Week is the student-teacher basketball game, which I think is next Monday. And then this weekend is CHS's musical Anything Goes. That's this Thursday through Sunday. Grades also closed this week for term one, and they're going to reopen on the 17th. On the 29th, the Fall Sports Award Night is happening to showcase all the different fall sports. They recently put up different stop signs and speed bumps around the school to ease traffic. SATs are going to be on December 2nd, and there was a winter sports meeting today for all winter sports athletes where they met with coaches and they talked to Mr. Hart.
Okay, very good. Good news?
Just a couple of good news items. First of all, we'd all like to thank Chelmsford Telemedia for putting us on high def because that's excellent news. I really appreciate that as a committee. Looking forward to it tonight. They even took off the filters for tonight to just be very clear, so it's exciting. I speak about this child all the time only because of her incredible enthusiasm and what she does. So we have, she's now an eighth grader. I think I've been talking about her since fifth grade, is Sachi Bedola. She spoke in front of 1,800 educators at Gillette Stadium. She was the Q-Bite speaker. So at MasQ, it's called Massachusetts Computer Using Teachers. And they, she spoke in front of everybody about mindset and women in STEM, and she did an unbelievable job. So we were very, it was great to watch, and her parents were, you know, pleased as punch. And she just had such an energy that she captured that whole room. It was funny because the poor speaker that went next, they were like, "Sorry, Mary, you'll have to go after her." So she got up there, but she did a great job. And then what's interesting is when we were sitting in that room, they were talking about 1,800 educators. And I work with the area assistant superintendents on trying to provide area PD for teachers that we don't have many of. We call them low incident teachers, so L teachers, reading teachers. We ended up giving them all high-quality PD on the full day, PD day, for 2,100 educators at four different sites. So I'm like, "Oh, we can do this at Gillette next year, but it costs us a lot of money." So we were able to provide all of that professional development, along with our regular educators in our district. So it was a really great day last Tuesday. Lots of energy. We used a few of our buildings, specifically the high school, McCarthy Middle School, and Parker, and the teachers were just able to access a lot of PD. So that's my good news for the evening.
Okay, I'd just like to add a couple of things. First of all, I want to commend our athletic teams. Several of them went on in the tournament, but they all, there were several teams that just had bad luck, two-point after. There was an overtime in soccer, I think, and, you know, it just, it seemed like the things just didn't break. But, you know, we had virtually all the teams qualified. And a team worthy of note is volleyball team because they won the sportsmanship award, which is, I think that says a lot about the team. You know, they didn't have a great year in terms of record, but everything I heard, you know, about them is that they were great kids and competed well, and I know they had injuries on top of everything else. So congratulations to all of them. I had the opportunity to go to the junk collection done by McCarthy and sent to school, and that's a major operation that those people undertake. And the turnout seemed to be good, but it just shows that the amount of work that the community puts in to the benefit of the school district. I also saw the most recent music bottles and cans collection, and I didn't realize what a big deal that was. I mean, the amount of material that they collect is, again, really impressive. And this kind of thing goes on, you know, all the time, and I just bring these things up because people don't see them sometimes, but people are out there working on behalf of the district continually. I also wanted to mention the National Honor Society. I think it may have been brought up before, the Heart for a Cure. It's a big event and well-appreciated by the people at Paul Center. Also, it was on Facebook the last couple of days, but Project 300, I think was bigger than ever. I would be, I'd like to hear what the total collection was because they were leaving from the school, from McCarthy, to go to Hannaford to pick up more, I believe. And I think it's true that it's, if not the biggest, it's one of the biggest food collections in the state. So congratulations to the people who were involved in that. I also want to commend the schools that had Veterans Day programs. I heard really good things about them. And at the veterans ceremony over at the veterans park, the singing was by two of the kids from the high school, which was really good. So, you know, we're in the community, and it works both ways. The community's supporting us continuously, and the kids are out working and supporting the community. So enough of that, we'll move on. MCAS, this is big.
This is big. This is everybody's favorite topic. So tonight I'll be obviously going over the next-generation MCAS with you to inform you of some of the changes, answer some questions, talk a little bit about the data that we have. Some of the things I'll be talking about tonight is like, what is the next-generation MCAS, those achievement levels, proficiency rating, a snapshot of what's happening in our district, and our next steps that we'll be doing as a district. So starting off, a lot of people have heard about just MCAS Park, all these different names that are out there. The MCAS is a 20-year-old test. It started in the 90s, and where, and the test is a little antiquated at this point because it's been around, there wasn't a lot of changes to it. And what is happening with the next-generation MCAS is that they're zoning in a little bit more on like students' critical thinking skills rather than just answering a question. It's giving us a better sense of like, what is college readiness? And then what, and this test was designed to be online, although there is a paper version of it, and Chelmsford has a combination of both the paper version and the online testing. Last year, we were supposed to do grades four and eight online, which we did. The rest of our students were paper pencil. This year, the change will be that we are testing our, we have to add in seven and grade five into the mix of online testing so that by 2019, all of our students will be taking the test completely online.
They perform better on paper.
Well, we're in the process of still doing the analysis of trying to find out what, how the students did compared to each other, but we don't have, not all of our students did all paper pencils, so it's a little, it's a little difficult to determine that for us at this point. They're now calling the MCAS the legacy MCAS, and this is the next-generation MCAS, not to be confused with the next-generation science standards, because we have to have the same names for some of these things to be a little confusing. So the legacy MCAS, the MCAS that we've all been used to, had four different proficiency ratings. You had the advanced, proficient, needs improvement, warning, and failure. The failure is for the high school level. That's our competency determination. Students need to be able to pass the MCAS in order to graduate from high school, and that's all high schools. That's not just Chelmsford High School. So you'll see more of any warnings would be more for your grades three through eight students. There's still four proficiency achievement levels for students with the new MCAS, and it's, the next-generation one, it's exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. The difference with our new achievement levels is that they can't be correlated with the old one. Originally, when we were talking about whether it was Park or an MCAS 2.0, they were talking about doing an equal percentile linking of the two tests like they did with the SAT when they made those changes. They didn't end up doing that. They're saying that this year is our baseline, and I'll speak a little bit more of that. And with this information, we're going to move forward with how our students are doing. So it's like a little playing field or a new playing field for all of us. What you see here is just a snapshot. This is obviously not a real child, Jonathan Doe, 1, 2, 3, 4, but this is what parents are just received in the mail. So the difference, too, is that the previous MCAS, the legacy MCAS, the expectations were between 220 and 280. Those were the difference between the warning failure to the advanced. The new numbers are 440 to 560, with 500 being a year growth and having students meet expectations. So parents just received the first part of their student's results, and this is an example of mathematics, letting them know how they did, as well as in the top right-hand corner, you can see like almost like a little gray bar. That gray bar is if the students were to take the test over and over, what would be their performance level. That used to be on the old MCAS as well to give parents an idea of how their students were doing. So this gives them a little bit of a comparison of what's happening for their students and then where they need to go. The second part of a student result, which, again, this is an example, the difference here compared to what parents received before is they were getting exactly how many questions they received right out of the different, now, this is mathematics, so the domains in English, it's the strands. And then what they did is they gave them a comparison of the average of students meeting expectation compared to how their student was doing. The other piece on their new reporting is that they have the numbers of the different questions that they took and how they did on each individual question. Parents can then pull up the old test, the test that they took, and compare it to see where their child is doing, any types of support. So it gives them a little bit more information than what we were receiving in the past for So you've probably read some of the articles in the news and seen some things people are saying, "Well, did students do better on the old MCAS, or why are they not doing so well on this one?" This is just more of a general piece. In doing the first analysis of Chelmsford, I didn't see, and the coordinators didn't see, any major changes. What you might see a little bit more is less students in the advanced category, but there wasn't this large overwhelming complete change for our students that they were suddenly not meeting expectations in their competency determinations. So our students are pretty much on par, but what the difference is, is that the standards have changed. They're a little bit more rigorous. There was some revamping of the ELA and the mathematics. And then what they're saying is that a lot of educators were saying that students were not ready. A lot of the impetus for this, and it's still the case, is when you look at the college persistence rates, our students are not staying in college, not Chelmsford specific, but in Massachusetts. And one of the things is, is that students are having to take remedial courses when they go to college, which means they're non-credit bearing. So they may have to take a math class because they're not technically ready after they've taken an Accuplacer, and they have to take a course in college, and you'll pay for it, and you will not receive credit for it because it's almost like a remediation of what they needed in order to do well in college. This also lets us take a look of where the students' scores fall so we can do some comparison of that readiness and get them ready for college and career. They, I spoke earlier before that this is a baseline year, so we're starting off from the beginning to see how our students are doing. And that this doesn't mean that they learned less, it just means that they're being assessed in a different way. One of the other correlations, what they wanted to do is take a look at national tests and international tests, like I'm sure you've heard about the PISA. This is the NAEP levels that have happened for Massachusetts. If you look at the NAEP levels, so this is the National Assessment of Educational Proficiency in the nation, our NAEP tests mirror more of what this new next-generation MCAS looks like, so how our students are doing. Most of the students in Massachusetts are still within that 50% range, and if you look at the MCAS scores across the state, you'll see that those students are falling in that same type of category. So we're seeing more of a correlation with national testing that has more norming to it than just Massachusetts. And now we can see if our students are meeting those criteria that they need. So let's take a look at our district-level data. These are our cute kids, these are Chelmsford kids. Look at our cute data. This first slide, and I'm not going to go through each one individually with you, but this first slide is just a snapshot of all students, grade eight, three through eight in mathematics, ELA, and science. Now, to add a little bit more confusion to this, because, you know, makes, this is what gives us our jobs, the mass, the science standards have not changed. That is still the MCAS that students have been taking. There's no lettuce, there's no legacy MCAS, there's no next-gen at this point for the science. So what you're seeing for science is what we're used to seeing and what the students are taking. Students only take the science MCAS in grades five, eight, and 10. So this is how we did across the district with, and then compared to the state, and you'll see that most of our students typically fall within the advanced proficient rating. Some of the things you have to look at when you look at the partially meeting expectations and not meeting expectation is the number of students. So, you know, 5% might sound like a lot, but it's really with the students that we're working with. The other piece is when we looked at the partially meeting expectations, they had to be at a 500. Anyone that didn't meet that 500 were more of like 498 or 497. So there wasn't a big distinction of students like down at 400, and they, you know, they were not doing well. So we're very confident that the education and the teaching that they're receiving, that our students will end up doing well. The subsequent slides that you have in your packet are just the breakdown of all grade three students, grade four students, five, six, seven, and eight. So these are all students that took the MCAS, the new next-generation MCAS with ELA and mathematics. And then when you look at the grade five one, if we can skip to that, you'll see that that is still the STE, the Science, Technology, and Engineering standards that they took. So it gives you just a little snapshot of how our district is doing. Typically, what happens, this is just one report that we can receive from the state, we can drill it down to the student, to the teacher, to the classroom, and that's the work of the department coordinators, along with the building principals, to see how specific schools did, specific grade levels did, and then where they're finding some discrepancies for their students or they have to make changes in the curriculum. So I talked about those standards and those domains. They will take a look, a deeper dive and a deeper look into those standards and domains to see where it is that students actually need support so that they can make those changes. And then we can correlate it with our internal benchmarks. So although this is a state-level, one-time summative assessment, we have continuous benchmarks all through the school year. So we have reading level benchmarks, writing, mathematics. We don't just wait for the state testing to come out. We're working with our students all through the year, and then we can correlate it with, are we doing the best for our students, where we need to make those changes. So you'll see that across the levels for all grade three through eight students. And because I do like to confuse you a little bit more, our current juniors, right, so Catherine 's group over there, they took the MCAS in 2017. The high school has not changed the MCAS to the next-generation MCAS. That won't happen until the current freshmen, the class of 2021. They will be the first class to take the new next-generation MCAS and have the new competency determinations. The way that the state is working with those competency determinations is every high school is being designated to give 25% of their current sophomores to take the test. It doesn't count. They're using it to start to make those baseline numbers for what competency determination will look like. So the state is in the process of that, although our students will still take the regular MCAS that all students have been taking for the past 20 years. So their competency determination will not change until the class of 2021. But one of the great things here and something to celebrate is Chelmsford High School's been a level-one high school for the past four years. They were level-two, they went up to level-one, and they've been holding strong. However, this particular year, they not only stayed at a level-one, they went, they surpassed it, in all of our subgroups. Our students did a fantastic job. So it wasn't just, you know, all students, our students with disabilities, our students, our L students, they're doing a great job, and it really shows. When we took, I got three phone, three or four phone calls, they were like, "Wow, Chelmsford." And I was like, "Yeah, I don't know what we did different," but it was great. So our students did very well. And this is a snapshot of how the students did. We have the CPI, which is the Composite Performance Index. So as you can see, that little red dot there is where you need to be. Our students either hit it or exceeded it throughout the year. And then even with the growth model, so our students have to be at 50 for one year's growth, they're over the, over the mark of 50 at Chelmsford High School. So our current junior used an unbelievable job, and they did that both in ELA math and in science, so it wasn't just one of the content areas. So what are the next steps? One of the first things we did is we communicated some of these differences and the changes to the admin. You know, the administrative council needs to know what's happening. Teacher's usually typically asking them questions. We've gone around to all the schools and through their department meetings or their faculty meetings, we've gone over these results. Our department coordinators and principals are still having data meetings right now as we speak. We're a little bit later this year with that, but they still do the data meetings with their internal benchmarks, and we're doing some of that correlation. We're going to all the DESE guidance, whether it's a webinar or an actual on-ground type of meeting, and then we'll continue with our action plans and just monitor how our students are doing in our curriculum. If you'd like some more information. I will tell you, they put out some nice information for parents on what this is about. They have some websites. The National PTA also is very good at putting out information for parents, so that's an excellent resource for parents to visit if they have questions. And as always, they should be contacting their teachers, their schools, for additional information on how their students are doing. So it's a lot to digest, there's a lot of changes, people a little confused. I will tell you, in talking to the schools, and we haven't heard a lot from parents. I don't know if they don't know what to ask or they're okay with it, but in general, Chelmsford fared very, very well on the testing, so I'm sure there wasn't any alarming piece to them.
This was five and eight, is it?
So grades three through eight took the next-generation science standards. Only grades four and eight took it online.
Okay.
So the rest of our students took a paper pencil. The high school took the old MCAS, the one we're used to. It's not old, it's new, it's the current one. And then for the science and technology, it's still the original MCAS that's coming out. This is going to be the first year this spring, they're doing it completely online. We have to administer it online, except for the high school.
So we equipped for online across the board?
That's our next, that's our next, hold on to that, that's our next agenda item.
There you go. Thank you very much.
I had just asked Linda a second ago, but that information and those slides are on our website, so if parents want to go on our website, they can get that information also, some of the after resources. So yes, our next item on the agenda is just an update for you. As we indicated, we did have a couple of grade levels that had to take the online test last year. Let me just pull up the memo real quick. We have the option, basically, for this coming spring of either having all grade levels go online and take the computer-based test, or just add the additional two grade levels. And in talking to technology, which is kind of the driving force behind this, we're really still not at the point where, based on equipment, as far as the number of devices that we have and some of our infrastructure around like wireless technology in the buildings, we're hesitant to recommend for this year going completely computer-based. So we are going to add two additional grade levels, which we're required to, which is basically doubling the number of students or grade levels that took the test last year. But we're going to test grades three and six, still using the paper-based test in the spring of 18. And then in spring of 19, we know the whole district will have to go online, but that will give us another year as well to upgrade. As part of our capital plan, we've actually got infrastructure upgrades scheduled or slated for McCarthy Middle School, and then two of our elementary schools, Center and Harrington. So we'll be in better shape in the spring of 18 when all of the grade levels have to go online. But just want to let you know that we are going to pick up the two additional that are required and continue with paper-based testing for grades three and six, where it is not required yet. The biggest issue that we would have, again, is largely devices, but even at the middle school level, if all four grade levels had to go computer-based next year, the testing window just isn't large enough with the number, again, devices we have and the internet capacity, the bandwidth, to be able to have them all test at the same time. So this memo from Linda and Bill just kind of summarized that for you, but in case you had questions from parents, just wanted to be able to share that with you and our rationale.
Now, will the high school one events be online when that two years also?
Yep, so everybody in 2019 will be online. Some of the other pieces is because grades five and eight now have to take the science MCAS online, so they're shifting all of us there. So not only was it picking up two other grade levels, it was also picking up the grade five and eight for the science as well. So by 2019, everybody will be online, even like our L access testing is completely online at this point, so.
Okay. Third item on the agenda this evening is our fiscal 19. Believe it or not, we've already started preparing fiscal 19. Capital plans, we're internally starting to work on budget preparations for fiscal 19, but the capital planning committee is going to begin meeting in the next number of weeks. There are two offshoots from that. There's a technology advisory committee that's actually already met with the town IT and school IT to talk about capital projects for the year. And then the larger capital planning committee will meet Friday mornings, beginning either this week or next week, right through December. So we don't actually present until a December date, but that will be forthcoming. So we have a few recommendations for this year that we're bringing forth to you on the facilities front. So as you recall, a year ago, we had the facility assessment that was completed by Doran Whittier, and they gave us a voluminous amount of information and recommendations for each of our individual schools. So Brian Curly and Facilities here at the school department, myself, and then Gary Persicetti and Kathleen Canavan from the town have started to go through that report, sort all of the different items by recommendation, and they had recommended three different categories of immediate, midterm, and long-term need. So we're going through that, and probably within the week or so, we'll have our recommendations for you to consider on how to stagger that work over the next 10 years. for you to consider on how to stagger that work over the next 10 years. And what we're recommending is really, it's pretty in-depth and it's a lot of information. So I'd like to work with Al to dedicate a piece of either the December 5th or 19th school committee meetings to kind of have a working session with you and invite Brian, Kathleen, and Gary to come and kind of talk through the plan. We'll talk through like our rationale as to why we would face things in, say, year two as opposed to four. And by the end of the evening, hopefully have everyone have a pretty good comfort level with the report itself, what the recommendations are, and then how we're recommending implementing them. And again, that would then be incorporated into our kind of 10-year capital plan that would guide our work for the years to come. One of the issues on facilities that we've really been kind of, not kicking around, but it's just such a big number that it's kind of moved from year to year, that we are recommending this year to move forward with. And a lot of people have received complaints about this recently, but a lot of our parking lots at the high school in particular, near the Performing Arts Center, the front of the Parker Middle School, are really just in very bad shape. So on the capital plan, we had some external projects that had been highlighted for years. Those are the two, they were originally going to be four, so I'll explain that to you in a second. But those are the two major projects on the facility front that we're recommending happen in year one. There's been a significant amount of work that's actually been done in the school buildings the last couple of years. And our hope is to kind of take a year off from the inside of the buildings. That will also allow our cleaning crews to have full access to the buildings and do a really thorough cleaning of the schools. Last summer, for instance, like at Chelmsford High School, we had a lot of work that went on putting up the wall dividers within the classrooms. And there's just, there's been high, high activity. We were originally going to bring in the facility front, four capital projects forward for you. One was the replacing all the curbing and the paving in Chelmsford High School. That's front, back, all around the sides. Second one was the front of Parker. So there's been some work at Parker in the past, but this is that front circle near the gazebo and that little side lawn and adding some handicap spaces. And then if you recall, when we did the modular classroom construction project, in addition to the modular classroom construction, we also earmarked some additional parking for Biim, which got completed through the project, and then Center and Harrington, because that's been a concern at those schools for quite some time. So when we originally went out to bid on the modular project, we had enough capacity within that to tackle one of the parking projects. And Biim was deemed to be the neediest at the time, so we did go forward with the Biim project at that point. Given the way the project overall, funding-wise, as we've reported recently, it's gone very well. We're actually under budget on all the projects and even under budget within the contingency on the project. Yet the capital, not the capital planning, the, losing the name of it, I guess it's the capital planning group that meets every other week that's been kind of guiding the project. Gary had recommended, and I support, and you know, Paul, the town manager's support, utilizing some of that extra contingency money, which has already been allocated to the project, to be able to tackle the Center parking and the Harrington parking outside of the town's capital project. So those parking projects added up to about $180,000. $63,000 for Center and then 116 for Harrington. But we're going to actually be able to perform those projects under the allocation for the modules. So instead of having four projects come for you for facilities, we've removed those two because they're going to be handled through the other funding source. And that actually just occurred last week while I was gone. So we'll notify the schools that that'll be forthcoming, and we'll be able to actually prepare those bids and get that out to bid so that that work could actually potentially be done in the spring, once the, we're done with winter and the parking clears up. So between the spring and the summer at the latest, we'll be able to have the additional parking at Center and Harrington. So I think that's going to be really welcome. And again, we're not going to have to wait for the, for the capital project to be approved. So at this point in time, for the facility front, our recommendation would just be the high school and the Parker projects, and that totaled 1.6 million. That would be our facility ask. And on the technology front, we actually have three projects that are prioritized in fiscal 19. The first, which is listed on the report at 376,000. This is the year two of phase two of the network infrastructure upgrades. So this is upgrading the necessary switches and wireless access points at McCarthy Middle School, Center, and then Harrington Elementary Schools. And it's a combination of town capital funding, and then we also receive E-rate reimbursement funding for those projects. But the net effect of the ask is the 376. And then a second line item, which has been a longstanding line item, is the $75,000 per year to implement the interactive technology within the classrooms. If you recall, that actually used to be close to like $130,000. Couple of years back, it got knocked down to 75. And it's approximately $3,000 per classroom is what we're able to accomplish with that. We went to the capital committee last year in the district. I want to say we had between 50 and 60 classrooms that still needed that type of equipment. Last year, we had some discussion with the capital planning committee because there was a concern about should this actually be included as a regular operating budget expense? Should it be a capital expense? And we agreed that, you know, this has been a 10-year project that we really need to at least see through to completion. So we funded 75,000 last year, which took care of about 25 of the classrooms, which still leaves us with approximately 25 or so classrooms to be done. So technically, the $75,000 would be the last year to kind of fully outfit all of the classrooms in town with some type of an interactive classroom technology. Now, this isn't going to be the last time we're ever going to ask for interactive classroom technology, because even some of the original technology that got put into place, you know, is now 10 years old. So we're going to have to continue a strategy in the, both using operating funding, potential capital funding, one-time funding, to implement some additional technology in the classrooms and to begin to come up with a plan to replace some of the aging technology. I know in the modular classrooms, everyone's been through the new interactive TVs. That's kind of the model of technology that we're implementing now. It's being really well-received in the schools, and we'd love to kind of standardize on some type of a design like that. But the 75,000 that's in the capital plan is for those last 25 classrooms or so to be able to complete the initial project. And then lastly, because we are implementing the network infrastructure upgrade, last year we had performed the infrastructure upgrade at Parker Middle School. And again, they're seeing some really good results from the new network. Now that we actually have additional drops in network capacity within the building, we are able to, last year, security system-wise, all of the external cameras of the schools were upgraded. But we now actually have some capacity to start going inside the buildings and upgrading some of the interior cameras within the schools. So the 45,000 that's earmarked there is actually earmarked now because Parker has capacity to add some additional interior cameras at Parker Middle School. We can anticipate a year from now is if we upgrade, you know, McCarthy Center and Harrington in fiscal 19, fiscal 20, would include some additional funding for interior cameras in those particular schools. So it's going to be a rolling project, but those are the three technology capital projects that we're recommending for this year. And those three projects were presented to the technology advisory committee. Again, talked about with various projects that the town was bringing forward, and you know, that group supported these projects moving forward. So the process is actually at this point to come to the school committee, share those projects with the committee, have a discussion about them. And then obviously, the town each year allocates somewhere around $3 million for capital, and that's the amount of capacity that they have for these projects. So that the capital planning committee always asks us to prioritize the projects in the event, because again, schools have projects, police, fire, all the other departments have projects as well. And in the event that we exceed the $3 million ask, which is highly likely, then we need to try to figure out whose projects are going to get funded in 19 and whose have to get delayed a year. So my recommendation on the prioritization of these projects is listed on the last page. I really think it's critical, just given the amount of testing and the assessments that we're going to have to conduct, and the fact that we have the 40% E-rate match still being valid at this point in time. I think the number one project for us technology-wise is that network infrastructure. I think this then is the year to try to knock off those external capital projects that deal with the driveways and the curbing. So the high school and the Parker would be my second two options there. And then third, with the continuation of the, fourth actually, the classroom technology upgrades, and then the Parker School security upgrades. Please don't take that as me saying any project is, you know, more important or less important or should be pushed to a particular year. But as far as, you know, prioritization goes, if it comes to that for fiscal 19, these would be the five projects that I would recommend, and in that order. But I'm happy to discuss that with you and talk further about the rationale.
I have a question. When can we enter into seeing some funding, some direction of funding to address the behavioral issues that were raised by Ms. Sims, Dr. Parks, and Mr. Wright? Sal agreed that that should be a priority. They asked what they, if they had money, what would they, you know, want to do with it? And it was spending it to educate their teachers and faculty, staff on how to deal with behavioral problems. I talked to teachers frequently. They prefer to address the behavioral issues in their building than technology. I know we don't have a choice with some of the technology that we need to, but I think we need to start addressing these issues. And I think that therapeutic classrooms have to be on our list. I don't know if it's appropriate in the capital budget, but we need to start considering this. It's a huge issue in our buildings. I know you're aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things on that front. I mean, as a district, we are putting in extraordinary amount of effort into social emotional learning and behavior programs. That's one of our kind of overarching focuses and goals for the year. So there is a lot of work that's underway on that, and it's going to be continuing. At the elementary level, you know, particularly we, and this was identified in the coordinated program review, which we'll actually be getting a little bit deeper into in the next meeting. But we have behavioral support programs at the middle school and the high school level. The one level in the district was identified, which we knew, but we didn't have programming, was really at the elementary level. So we are going to actually have a group that works on that this year, taking a look at models in other districts and what other districts find really effective to see, you know, how we could bring a program, how's it within one of our four schools, and begin to develop those programs. So that is on the horizon. That would be operating budget funding. That wouldn't be capital funding, because that is going to be a program that we're going to have to sustain within district. But capital funding basically are asks that are over a certain financial threshold, and then they have to be, not one-time purchases, but they're significant purchases that have a value and a lifespan in excess of five years. So it's, this is more of like your equipment purchases. This wouldn't be like personnel or programming.
But a therapeutic classroom in a case in elementary, if that's a focus, would likely require a pod. A modular classroom of some size, because we don't have the space. We have pods at our buildings, but those are classrooms, and we purchase those to address overcrowding. So I'm assuming to add an additional therapeutic classroom, it would require a purchase of a modular classroom, which over five years, yada, yada, yada.
Right. I wouldn't necessarily have to be out of the gate a new classroom, because even with some of the excess, we added the extra two classrooms on at the three elementary schools. If we had to look at a particular school right now to possibly house a behavioral program, of all the schools, South Row probably would have the most capacity of the other programs.
Do they have the highest need? I would think Biim would have a higher need, or even Harrington.
It would be a district-wide program. So similar to the autism program that's housed at the Biim school, any of our four schools that actually housed the behavioral program would service kids from all four schools. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the capacity to have an individual program in each building. But we would actually, similar to Biim, if a student from South Row would benefit from being in the autism program or require that, we would transport and have that child participate in the Biim program. If a Biim or Harrington or Center student had someone who needed to participate in this behavioral program, they would then just actually attend the program at South Row, if South Row happened to house it there. We wouldn't internally as a district have enough capacity to offer, say, four programs.
Who's sitting on the behavioral committee that you discussed, you talked about?
It's in the works right now. We actually, when we had our building admin meeting at the end of October, we identified different working groups that are going to take place for this year, so those are now being formed. But it will be a combination of district administrators. We will ask specialists in the district, some, say, BCBA, special education teachers, people that would actually work with the population, to be part of that group. And those will all be formed between now and Christmas, and they'd be tasked with, over the course of the winter and early spring, actually doing work on what it would take to build those kind of programs. But that would be an ask and a recommendation that would come with the operating budget for fiscal 19, when it comes out to you, probably at the end of January.
Okay, good. Thank you.
It is on the radar.
Yeah, we can't ignore it.
We'll hear more about it when I get to talk. Social emotional was the whole conference this year.
It has to be. It's out of control.
Well, I have statistics, and I'll share with you in a little bit.
On the classroom technology, you said there's like 25 classrooms left. Are they in one particular building? Are they spread throughout the district?
Throughout the district. Yeah, there's not just like one, one building missing them. And there are, you know, some classrooms that maybe just have a, like an Elmo-type projection camera, but they don't have the actual, you know, like the TV display with the interactive technology, things along those lines. At last count, there were, I want to say, 25 to 30, because we just completed around this past summer. And we were able to, in the kindergarten classrooms, well, the modular classrooms, install all new technology. So we're down to about 25 or 30.
And you would put like, you have in the modules with the big TV.
Yeah, that's what we're looking to do. And that's about a $3,000 cost, when you take into consideration the unit itself, the wiring, and whatnot.
And how the teachers liking that technology? Yeah. I haven't seen it actually yet, but.
They love them. Yeah. I mean, they're getting a lot of use. Every time we're in buildings, I mean, they're on. What's really cool is not only are the teachers using them, I mean, the kids are up using them. Very, very good feedback.
Good.
Yeah. The nice thing about those, they're not brand-specific either, so you can utilize a lot of different software on those. You know, if you have other smart boards in the district, you have access to smart software. Those can be utilized on those. But teachers are really liking them. Yeah, we've gotten very good feedback on this.
Is it a vote?
Yeah, I would appreciate a vote of the committee to basically recommend we move forward with these technology and facility capital projects for fiscal 19, and if necessary, in the priority order as I've recommended.
Would you like me to just state the amount?
No, I don't think. I think if you just made a recommendation to support the capital projects as presented in the, the order as presented, I think you're fine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we support the capital projects as presented in the order that you find.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing non-all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any abstention or negative vote? No, 5-0. Thank you. And again, just in closing on that note, I think, I think it's going to be very well-received that we can actually perform the parking upgrades at Center and Harrington with that, the remaining modular money. And I'll get communication out to the, to those schools tomorrow or Thursday, because I know that had been asked at PTO meetings and school site council meetings, it came up at the council schools meetings as well. So I'm sure that's going to be well-received. Fourth item on the agenda this evening is a vote to accept provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 113E. To the viewing audience, earlier this summer, we received a communication from Town Manager Cohen. There was a provision in the Municipal Modernization Act, which was passed a couple of years ago, that basically allows a town, in a situation, the school system, to work with the town to create a special education reserve fund in addition to other revolving funds or, say, circuit breaker funds that a district can take in. And the thought process behind this is in the event that, as people know from time to time, you can have unbudgeted or unanticipated costs related to special education, either programming or special tuition and transportation, that you have a reserve fund that you're able to draw on. And you can put funds basically in a savings account for future unanticipated expenses. You're allowed to basically put up to 2% of your annual net school spending amount in that fund. So based on how much Chelmsford spent last year, just as an example, 2% would be about $1.3 million. So that would be the fund balance that we would be able to have at any one given time in that fund. And a lot of this came up as we were looking at, at the end of the year. As you recall, we previously reported and included as part of the FY '18 budget, which we're in right now. Valley Collaborative, which is our collaborative district, is doing very good programming, and they're actually having excess revenue that they're generating from their program offerings. So one of the benefits of that is Valley Collaborative can only retain a certain number of money in all of their, their kind of carryover and reserve funds. And whatever is in excess of that at the end of the year when they're audited... And whatever is in excess of that at the end of the year when they're audited, has to be returned to their member district. So Chumpstead is a member district of Valley. When we were putting the budget together, it was anticipated that we would receive about $440,000 back from Valley for fiscal '18. And I just attended a board meeting a week or two ago, and it was actually determined at that point in time that our allocation, instead of being 440, looks at this point like it's going to be closer to 528. So it's going to be a little over half a million dollars, which is excellent for us, about $88,000 higher than we'd anticipated and higher than we had budgeted for. When we put our budget together for the year, if you recall, we wanted to consider this one-time money, so we didn't want to take the whole 440 and utilize it as a revenue offset in the budget. We decided to take a piece of that. And so we utilized $200,095. The $95 was basically the rounding number to make the budget balance, but we were going to use about half of that to support our operating budget, and the other half, we were going to put in a reserve fund. And we were trying to figure out if we wanted to either take the check and put it in a reserve fund, or the other thing, or the other ability that we have is to technically just take it as a tuition offset. So Valley would reduce the amount of their invoices that they send us by that amount of money. What that does, and it's, both are legal and both are optional to us, but what that does when we're actually reporting actual expenditures on our end-of-the-year report, both internally into the public, it makes you have these dips and spikes in your spending. And it just makes the, it's already a difficult story to explain to the public, because you've got not only local budget expenditures, but you've got circuit breaker reimbursement. You might have, we use non-resident student tuition, school choice-type funds in there. So you've got so many different offsets, it's difficult to explain to the public how to do that. We think the cleanest way of doing this would be to actually set up that reserve fund that was authorized, accept the check from Valley in the amount of the 528. A vote of the school committee is initially required to basically establish the fund. If the school committee votes to establish the fund, we then have to go to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen also have to vote to establish the fund. Once the fund is established, we would request the check option from Valley instead of the credit option. We would take the check and deposit it in the fund. But then, as you recall, because we have the offset of the $200,095, we would basically put the money in, because it all has to go in, and then we would ask for a vote of the school committee, and then a vote of the Board of Selectmen, to basically transfer out the $200,095, leaving a balance of, yeah, 328, thank you, in the fund to grow for future unanticipated costs. I think that's a very clean way of doing this. I think it's a public way of showing where the money is coming from, how it's being spent, and, you know, it's something we discussed with the finance team, with the town, Paul, Dolly, and John, Joanna, and myself. And I think that's the avenue that we're comfortable exploring. On a positive note, I see this Valley collaborative money coming back to us, you know, year after year. There, again, at the meeting, we received the final number for fiscal '17, but again, they're projecting surplus for fiscal '18. So I think this is good news for us, because we can anticipate this fund coming back. But if we actually have this fund, and we're recording and tracking the fund, the receipts within one fund, it'll make it a little bit easier and cleaner to explain to the public if the public asks. So that's my recommendation for you at the bottom of the first page of the memo. I just recommend a vote of the school committee right now to establish a special ed reserve fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E. Once you do that, again, I will convey that to Paul, have him work with the Board of Selectmen to take the same vote. I'll attend the meeting and explain this to them as well. And then, once the fund has been established, we'll work with Valley to get the check, to deposit the check, and then we'll come back before you to make the transfer out of the account. So there'll be a paper trail that ties into these recommendations.
Quick question. Is it always going to require a vote of the Board of Selectmen to get money, to move money out of this fund?
Yes, so you need a vote to establish the fund first. And anytime you're going to either move money out or you're going to transfer money, it requires a vote of both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. So I do think it's important that everyone's on the same page about this, and, you know, the rationale for the fund. But I think, you know, this is a good way of kind of trying, to see if this fund is going to work for us. It's not going to hurt you at all to set up the fund. But then I think, you know, we'll be able to test kind of how this works with our first deposit from Valley. And again, I wouldn't think that, as long as we're transparent in our budgeting and everything is well documented, I think, you know, it would be hard pressed, you know, for the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, not to support it. The money is going to be going to its special education costs. And again, I think this will just help us as we try to build up that reserve for special ed costs. And I think the number we want to be kind of having in our heads is, if we could get to the million and a half dollar mark, I think in years to come, we'd be in good shape. Right now, I believe we're at about $800,000, when we look at the year-end last year. So, you know, we've gone from, you know, negative 500 up to 800,000, which is great in two years. I think we stand a very good chance by the end of fiscal '19, if not in fiscal '20, to be able to reserve that million and a half dollars. And that will then allow for unanticipated costs that come up in the future, to be able to access that fund, pay for it, but then also replenish the fund over a couple-year cycle, and again, not have those big spikes and dips in our budgeting. So I think this is good practice, and I recommend that to you.
As we move money into it, is it, can come from any general fund, or does it have to come from specific line items?
That's interesting. You technically, your receipts are not earmarked, so I mean, you technically could move money into the fund if you wanted to. I don't personally foresee a situation right now where you would have excess money to be able to do that. It's more like the Valley collaborative receipt is the perfect thing for it. Right now, if you had money within your local operating budget that you wanted to earmark for, say, a special education offset, you're allowed to carry over a year of your circuit breaker allocation, which is around $2.5 million, and that's 100% within the school committee's control. So I would recommend to you to be able to just keep that offset within school committee purview and school committee control, to max out your leverage within the circuit breaker fund before going to this. This is a little bit different, because this is an actual external receipt coming in. This isn't an intergovernmental transfer within, like, an operating budget, and you couldn't just take this receipt and put it into a local fund.
Got it.
So you have to have a kind of a holding point for it.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
A little bit technical.
I have a question. Why here and not the circuit breaker?
Yeah, because you can't make that kind of a deposit into the circuit breaker fund. You need a revenue account to put it in.
Got it.
Do you anticipate this kind of amount moving forward, or is there any idea what we can expect in the future?
It's honestly hard to predict, because this is really the first big year that we're getting this funding back. I can tell you, from being on the board at Valley, they're doing a very good job, you know, kind of managing their finances and managing their program. It's been a complete 180 from the way it had been in the past. They've streamlined, you know, their operation. I mean, they're really running very efficient. And one of the things we talked about as a board, you know, someone might say, well, why don't you just lower the tuition fees? But in doing so, you know, certainly that would help us as a member district, but you'd also then be lowering the tuition fees for all the non-member districts. So a way of having the member districts kind of be rewarded is by, now, Valley hasn't raised the tuition rates in at least two or three years, I want to say. So we're maintaining the current tuition rates. We're still seeing a $2 million-plus return, of which about a quarter of it's coming to us. But you wouldn't see that great of a return if you just knocked $2 million off the tuition rate, and then the non-member districts weren't paying that. So it's a way to kind of benefit the member districts. But I see them, you know, in excess of a couple million dollars for the next couple of years. They've maxed out, which is good. I mean, they've maxed out all of the available funds that they can kind of hold on reserve. At the end of each year, we try to actually take some of the revenue and invest it in kind of one-time capital projects. They've done building enhancements, you know, new windows, new heating systems. There's just not a lot more that they can really do with the extra funding that they have. So I do think we're going to be seeing several hundred thousand dollars a year, up to half a million dollars a year, coming from Valley as a revenue.
They cut down the number of buildings we're using.
They consolidated.
They streamlined everything over there, so they're doing a nice job.
They're really doing a nice job.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I recommend the school committee vote to establish a special education reserve fund in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, 13E.
I second the motion.
Any further questions or discussion on this? All right, hearing none. Is this a money thing we...
I would do a roll call.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Five zero.
And everyone kind of agrees with the funding philosophy and how we're going to utilize this?
Yep.
We'll have this funded, hopefully, in a couple of years.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's a very good chance we may have it funded by the end of this fiscal year, if not into the beginning of next. And not to belabor this, but what that's really going to allow us to do is have sufficient reserves on hand to handle any kind of emergency that comes up. And anytime we actually generate then kind of excess revenue on our side, we can then invest that into kind of one-time needs. That might be able to be funds that go, say, for a technology purchase, or go to outfit a specialized classroom, or, you know, we want to get into doing a little bit quicker turnaround on some of the, say, interactive classroom technology and not having to do a 10-year rollout. We could do one-time funding. I would always recommend and caution you against utilizing that as like building into your budget itself, but knock off some of those one-time kind of priority projects that don't add to your local operating budget. And I think, you know, teachers and administrators and staff and parents in the district would really be happy to see some of those investments in the schools. So we're on the right track. Fifth item on the agenda this evening is a series of budget transfers. I'll actually ask Joanna, if you don't mind, to walk you through these three. We alluded to this at the last time we did the financial report at the end of the first quarter, that there were three different areas that we were going to be coming to you for budget transfers. The first related to the COLA increases that we granted as part of the contract negotiations this past year. There were then retroactive payments that were issued to the teachers for fiscal '17, and now we have people moved into the correct accounts and amounts on fiscal '18. And the last transfer is what are our lane changes. So if someone, and again, Joanna will move more depth into this, but, you know, if someone had a master's degree but ended up earning a master's plus 30, or a CAGS, or a doctorate, they tell us that they're in a program and they anticipate finishing, and we then allocate funding for their upgraded degree. And so that transfer is contained here as well. But I'll turn this over to Joanna to have her walk us through it.
Thank you, Jay. So the first transfer is for the cost of living increase. And as you may recall, when we built the fiscal '18 budget, the two contracts were not settled. So we placed $735,000 in one line item until it was settled, and that happened in August. And the teachers and the professional support personnel received their 2% increase in the first page in September. And when that happened, it went to the labor account associated with that person. So when you've been looking at the budget reports, we show nothing hitting the reserve account, and then all the little, all the labor accounts looked over budget. So for the teachers, it's $630,533.49. I'm requesting we moved out of the salary reserve COLA into, there's a couple pages, three and a half pages of labor accounts. And then for the professional support staff, I'm requesting $88,507.85 be transferred out of the reserve account into about one page of labor accounts, for a total of $719,041.34. That's the 2% COLA.
Could you just, because these are pretty sophisticated transfers, I'd recommend you actually just take three separate votes and do three separate actions on this, just for the record. So this could be a vote to authorize the transfer of $719,041.34 within the account specified to pay for the cost of living increases.
So that, so that motion might sound like I make a motion to transfer $719,041.34 from the reserve account to the one-time 2% COLA increase?
To the various teacher salary accounts.
To the various teacher salary accounts.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. I need to roll a call.
Aye.
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 Unanimous five.
Thank you. The second transfer is for retropayments for the teachers, for $604,347.39. This is for the retropayment from last year. So the COLA you just approved was for this school year. This is the retro for the last school year. And the teachers received their retropayment September 1st. We did a special payroll for that. I'm asking that this be taken out of the special ed tuitions account. And as you may recall, that's because, since we didn't utilize the reserve account last year, you authorized that reserve for special ed tuitions.
We parked it there.
That's right. So I'm asking that we take it out of our special ed tuitions and then allocate it to all the different labor accounts where the retropayment was recorded.
So let's take a shot at this. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to transfer $604,347.39 from the special ed tuition account to all...
The various labor accounts.
Various labor accounts.
As referenced.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous five zero.
The last budget transfer is for the salary lane changes. So we had budgeted $146,890 anticipating employees advancing a degree. And when all the paperwork came in, there were approximately 25 who achieved this goal, for a total of $95,738.64. They have received their lane change already, and these are the labor accounts that it was, it was recorded to. So I'm requesting a transfer from the one line where we budgeted the lane change into these different labor accounts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to transfer $95,738.64 from the one lane...
Salary lane reserve.
Salary lane reserve to the labor account?
Correct.
Perfect.
Second.
Any question or discussion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank Joanna and the staff and the business office for putting this together. It's a tedious accounting, but they did a very good job of doing this. That was item number five. Item number six is the personnel report for the month of October 2017. And again, this is just a rolling list of the various personnel actions within the district, so this is a list of all the new hires. You'll notice we hired a number of paraprofessionals and lancher access aides during the month of October. We had a few resignations. We didn't have any retirements, and then we had an assignment change. So again, just three, three and a half pages of personnel activity that occurred during the month of October. Just sharing that with you to keep you in the know of the different personnel happenings within the district. No action required.
Is there any position that's not filled with the current name?
Sorry. I just, you know, if we had something... I have a first question. No, I mean, there's no, like, vacancy that I can think of. There might be like a substitute filling in for a job, but there's no, there's no, like, hole.
Sometimes we have trouble finding something.
No, we're doing okay. I mean, a lot of times what you will see is, particularly in the early months, a lot of paraprofessional turnover. Some of our paraprofessionals will end up getting a teaching positions. They might be in the queue kind of waiting for that, so they turn over, so then we have to backfill a paraprofessional position. But no, we're actually doing... But, no, we're actually doing very good.
We're advertising for subs still.
Yeah, we're still, still looking for subs. And again, that's, that's an issue where if, you know, paras do move up in the district, oftentimes subs, if the good subs are used to them in the buildings, it's a great tool to be able to attract staff from. So it's, that's kind of a never-ending cycle of trying to bring in good subs. And they end up filling a lot of your long-term, long-term openings, as well as permanent openings for paras and aides and things.
What was the decision on the nurse coordinator position? They're, they're taking on nursing duties at the Parker, or no?
Yeah, nothing's changed since the, the time we took, talked about it. That's actually the last position that's listed on the, the report here. Peggy will be coming on board officially in that role in the next week or two. She will be stationed at the Parker Middle School. And as a piece of her job, she may be doing some nursing duties.
So she won't be evaluating? She's part of that unit she can't...
She's not part of that unit. So she may be evaluating. I mean, at this, this point in the year, evaluations have already been assigned. But that is an administrative nurse, and that position certainly may do evaluation of staff.
I think Peggy Yump is a wonderful addition. I'm glad we stayed within the Johnson family, and I think she's gonna be unbelievable. And I just wanna make sure that we continue to support her in this new position. It's gonna be, you know, uncharted territory for Peg, and I just hope that we do what we need to do for her.
Yeah, no, we're certainly gonna support Peggy as we would any, any other individual coming into the district. We're excited about it. I think the, the nurses that I've talked to are excited about having a dedicated person to, um, to work with them, both on a day-to-day basis and even just to, to work on some professional development initiatives that they wanted to work on over the number of years, so.
So as a coordinator position? As a coordinator position, that's year-round full-time?
It's a year-round full-time job.
Okay.
We're still, I mean, at this point in time, it's a non-affiliated position, so it's not part of a bargaining group. But we've received notice from one of the unions, the admin union, that they believe the position should be recognized within the union. So that will be a negotiation or interaction that'll have to take place.
How's our sub pool for nurses?
Um, it, it...
Last year?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's still an issue. I mean, we're, we've been, had a pretty good year this rate, fill rate-wise. The fall and the spring, it's always gonna be tough. I mean, there's just, there's a lot of field trips that happen too that require nurses. And that's a group too that we're always recruiting. We did pick up a couple of new kind of day-to-day sub-nurses. I haven't heard the concerns this year like I did last year, but it's an ongoing issue to try to recruit people for those jobs.
I think we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, no, it sounds like it.
Right?
Yeah.
Excuse me. The, um, again, no action was required on your part on that report. I was just providing it as, as information. Number seven on the agenda this evening is the food, uh, food-related fundraising policy. We've, we've talked about this a couple of times. And then we went back and checked to see, you know, exactly what the requirements were for this policy. The Wellness Advisory Committee looked at the, the policy again and what the, um, the implications are. And as a district, we are required to have a, um, a policy related to food fundraising. So basically, the group has worked on a policy, and then they also put a kind of a form together to track some of this fundraising. What I'm asking the committee to do is approve the policy itself, but not the form or the application, because the, the form of the application may be modified from time to time. We may wanna look at trying to do like an electronic application to help us in not only tracking the food-related fundraising, but opening this up to being able to kind of have a depository of all fundraising activity in the district. And every time we make a tweak to the form, we don't wanna have to come back and have the school committee necessarily have to just approve a form. So it's really the policy that we're looking for you to approve, and it's similar to the, the previous one. In a nutshell, if there is a fundraising activity that's gonna take place in the schools that the building principal is approving and signing off on, if it's gonna occur 30 minutes before the start of the school day, up to 30 minutes after the end of the school day, then it needs to conform to the, the requirements that are listed within the policy, the kind of the Smart Food Act. If it's gonna happen outside of that window, then it wouldn't have to. So that's basically what this policy is doing. What we're basically gonna abide by is the, just the letter of the law as far as the fundraising. Not go further, not go less. But if it's gonna be a food-related fundraiser, the, um, the food has to meet the Smart Snack requirements. You can use that link to find out what they are, if it's gonna happen during that time period. If it happens before, it happens weekends or after, it doesn't need to conform. But we do need to have a policy in place. And so this is coming forward from the Wellness Advisory Committee. So I, again, there's nothing substantive that's changed within this report. The only thing that I'm requesting or recommending is that you don't actually approve the application itself, just approve the policy. And we'll, we'll get that on record.
This chairman, I make a motion that we approve the fundraising policy as stated.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? We got to the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any extension or negative vote? Unanimous five.
And then we, we took earlier in the evening the field trip request item eight out of order, so we don't have any activity on, on item number eight. So that brings you to liaisons.
Dennis, would you like to start with the liaison?
Sure. Yeah, Al and I and Jay, when they're all went down to the MASC conference down at Cape last week. So me, my first experience, I thought it was great. It was great to go meet other school committee members from other communities and other superintendents, assistant superintendents. I thought there were some, some very interesting sessions. I sat on a couple of different ones. One of the ones I sat on was goal-setting for our school committees and superintendents. And so one of the things, questions that brought to me is where, where are we at with our goals? And, you know, looking at, at past goals, I, I think the, the goals we had last year sort of expired in June, so I think it's, you know, at a point where we should probably be sitting down and come up with some new goals. And, you know, looking forward, maybe talk about setting our goals a little earlier. You know, we're already a quarter way through the year. You know, it's already November 14th. I know last year, you know, they started the process around this time, but they didn't get approved, I think, till January. So your goals really went from January to the end of June. So maybe doing something over the summer, some sort of workshop or retreat or whatever to kind of take care of those things. I went to a couple of things on college and career readiness, which is a topic that I'm kind of interested in, not only because of the school committee, but being a teacher and wondering what, what kind of skills and knowledge kids are gonna need once they get out of, out of school. I went to a couple of things. One of the keynote presenters, I've talked about jobs in the future, five years, 10 years from now, and the kind of skills kids are gonna need, and they're much different than the skills they needed five years ago or 10 years ago. So we have to kind of consider those things. I sat on a seminar that was put on by some people from Marlboro Public Schools. And they have a very comprehensive program. You know, they have a, a program that involves collaborations with local colleges, community colleges, local businesses, um, community groups, business association, those type of things. They have academic components to it that reach all the way down to the middle school. So, you know, those are the type of things, if, if we're looking to go in that direction, that I think, you know, we could look to a model like that. I mean, they've been doing it for a few years, so they, this is very, very involved and a lot of different layering. But, you know, if we're starting to think about those things, you know, I think that's kind of a good jumping off point. And then the last thing I sat on was sort of a, um, an impromptu roundtable with some, some people with, from DESE that wanted to know the role that different school committees have in curriculum. They're kind of wondering, you know, what kind of role, if any role, the school committees have. And it was, it's interesting that, that it varied a lot. There were some people that they had no connection, whatever, to curriculum. Others were very involved, they had subcommittees, that type of thing. I think, you know, the, the message was, there's gotta be a middle ground there somewhere, where, you know, because a lot of curriculum things involve money and budgeting, that type of thing, school committees have to be involved. But then the people actually doing the teaching, they have to be the ones that have to decide and plan. So I think one person put it the best in that any kind of issue like curriculum, there's gonna be a who, what, where, when, why, and how. You know, our role is kind of the what and why. You know, why are we doing it? What are we gonna do? And then the teachers, the administrators are taking care of the who and the when and the where, and those type of things. So we couldn't kind of get that perspective. And it was, it was the DESE people that were out wondering. They didn't know themselves, and they wanted to kind of get a perspective of, of where everybody was at. So I thought those were all, you know, very worthwhile undertakings, so.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'll just follow up, 'cause we're, we're the same place. First of all, I wanted to comment that Jay and I actually met with Heather Lindstedt today about some alumni stuff. And Heather's, I'll back up. Dennis Hunt has been developing a project for last year called Project Share, or Share Project. And the idea is that alumni, people in the community, will, will make themselves available. And we already have over 50 people that have volunteered to, to serve as mentors, quote-unquote. And she has a date coming, and I should, I should have it. I think it's the 28th or something, but I, anyway, skipping the date, where kids and their parents will be invited to come to the high school. And using two cafeterias, they'll have an opportunity to talk to these mentors and ask questions about career and moving toward college. And this is just sort of a kickoff for the program, so that Dennis and others will be working in the high school in conjunction with Cindy Atchison to provide, so if kids, you know, so I volunteered, just as an example. So if somebody wanted to talk about, you know, a recreation field, 'cause they worked in it, or if they wanted to talk about Springfield Tufts or BU, you know, you know, I, I could give them some information. It may be old in some cases, but I think it's exciting. And, you know, it fits in with what you're saying about emphasis. And more, more of the work that Heather's doing, she's not just raising money. She's really trying to, to provide services to the community with the alumni. So this is one of the ways she's working on it. In terms of my experience at, at the conference, the one document that I picked up, I, I can't read the whole thing, but maybe some of you may want copies. Everything down there emphasized social-emotional. And they presented this document from Jamie Volmer. And the name of the person's book is Schools Cannot Do It Alone. And there are 20 trends in public education that are identified. And the first is demographics. And I, this is, I mentioned, and I wanted to share with you, 'cause you'd be interested in it. The first area of democra, demographics that they shared, based on the 2013 census information, 70, almost 77% of the US population is over the age of 18. The median age is 37.8, almost 38 years old. And less than 27% of the adult population has kids in the school. That's pretty small.
Yeah.
In terms of language, today, 1 in 5 US citizens speak a foreign language at home. In 1980, 23 million residents spoke a language other than, other than English at home. And in 2013, it's 64 million. So it just exploded. In terms of poverty, 13.1 million children under the age of 18 live in a household unable to consistently access enough food for a healthy lifestyle. So this, you know, goes to some of the things that Sal's talked about. And to, again, 2013, just over a million homeless students entered the public school. And now, you know, it's complicated. We haven't been impacted by it, but, you know, kids coming up from Puerto Rico, there are, because of disaster, in, in a number of places, the number of people coming into the public schools nationally, it's a, it's a situation. Middle-class families, you've heard of the decline of the middle class. They're defined as families earning from $42,000 to $126,000, have declined from 61% in 1971 to 50% in 2015. The other areas, and I won't read all of them, but just to give you an idea of the scope of this report, of this book, other factors impacting on public education. Negative media, fear of school violence, rise of special interests, the plague of regulations, fear and loathing of the government, frenzy of privatization, anti-tax movement, schools are scapegoats, union bashing. You know, it goes on and on. So, you know, this goes back to the kinds of things that Barbara was talking about that, you know, at one point, I can honestly say that, that we had arguments about whether the schools should deal with any of this or not, way back. You know, schools should teach content and leave the rest of it to churches and the family and talk about a change.
Yeah.
How, how can you teach kids content if they can't, if they don't have any food in their stomach?
Right.
And the, you know, the home split, and all those kinds of things that they're dealing with.
Or you have behavioral issues, one or two students, or disrupting the education of everyone else in the classroom.
So the only thing, you know, I, I ended up participating because, as was indicated, we have a lot going for it, we just haven't necessarily put it under the topic. For example, the whole thing with the Pride program, you know, coming up through from K all the way through middle schools and so forth. I think at some point, it would be, you know, and maybe this is happening, and, you know, Linda might be able to help, is to just recognize officially what we have. Because I think we have a lot of things that are addressing these things. Not, not, not just in special education, but for all of our, all of our kids. And trying to build, another thing they talked about was positive mindset. And really stress this, I don't know if you ran into that, but it popped up time and time again, that you can succeed, and you can achieve, and you can move forward, just to give that mindset, as opposed to, I'm stuck in, in a ghetto and I can't go anywhere and I don't have any support, you know, that kind of thing. But just one other thing that I'll mention, and I'll drop from this, 'cause I wanna talk about the building meeting that I went to, just briefly. While we need special programs, everybody in the building has to work on these issues. The value of every kid has to be recognized. And it's little things. You may have seen on Facebook, my nephew is vice principal of middle school in Middleborough. And on, I think it's once a week on Thursdays, but it doesn't really matter. He stands out in front, and I think the principal does too, with signs that they've scribbled on paper or whatever. This isn't a, you know, fancy thing, but it says, "We're glad you're here today." Okay? And, and things like that. And then they take pictures. The kids, just, they run off the bus, 'cause they wanna have their picture taken, 'cause it goes on Facebook with the sign. So it's little things like this where the whole culture of the building is committed to recognizing things. And, you know, even things, one of the biggest things for, for teachers is to see somebody that's not their normal self. They're down, or they, they can't even be crying. And I can, I can remember myself, I can remember, like, you know, just, I was in fourth grade, in a two-room schoolhouse. I went to two-room schoolhouses for the first two grades in this, and third and fourth. And my grand, one of my grandparents had died, and I was sitting there crying. And the teacher came over. That shows you how important it is, 'cause this is you know, a number of decades ago. The, the teacher came over, just took me aside and said, "There's something wrong." And there was. And so I think an emphasis has to be, and I think I, you know, we, we get it with the students, the students of the month all the time, that that is taking place in our district, which is reassuring. But we need special programs for the severe cases, you know, where kids disrupting the whole classroom. We also need everybody in the district to be committed to recognizing when kids need that level of support, because so many of them do, for so many reasons. All right, the other thing, I went to a lot of sessions, just as you did. But I wanted to just take a minute to talk about, I went to one on building proposals. And they, you know, these are people that just finished the process for the most part. They receive 80 to 100 proposals a year. The average of the people there in terms of having gotten, gotten through is three to, three to four times resubmitting. So, you know, this is not, you know, looking ahead. Because we, you know, we, if, if we're rejected, we don't go through, we can't quit, because that's kind of the way it goes.
The long haul.
Yeah. And, and one of the reasons that the administration pushed us into this process is they recognized it, and, you know, we need to recognize that. And we shouldn't, we can't have the attitude, if it doesn't go through. If it goes through, fine, then we gotta come up with money and we move ahead. But if it doesn't go through, we can't take it as a negative. They, they don't do that many out of the 80 to 100 that are, that are proposed. They don't do that many out of the eighty to one hundred that are proposed. And the other thing is, you know, we have to, you have to sell our case, because there are a lot of schools in Massachusetts that were built, you know, a long time ago. And some are, well, I'll give you one, and some of these are emergencies. I talked to the representative from Bridgewater-Ranham, a couple of years ago, the snow caved in the roof of their middle school, in the middle of the school here. So they had to redistrict the whole place in a matter of a few days. And now they have a proposal going through, and they're having an awful time getting it accepted because they made it work. They redistrict, it's not ideal, but they made it work. And so there's this whole negative, so they did a good job.
They got punished.
They got punished for it, the community, you know, I wouldn't say in the whole community, but there's an element of the community that they're using, the fact that they did a good job. We won't remember all of this, but there's a couple of other, they talked about the role of the school committee. And they, several of them suggested that you include skeptical people. Because then they're part of the whole thing, and if we do a good job with the presentation, when we get there, whenever that might be, they found that when the skeptics were part of the thing, that they saw the need and became, became some of the strongest advocates. The other thing is that they felt it was really important to have people familiar with construction as an industry, or a business, however you want to say it. Because if everybody doesn't know about it, it's a notable weakness. And another important thing that I thought, that I picked up, is you need to know the laws in terms of ethics, and what the building committee does as opposed to what the school committee does. So there's a lot, you know, when we get involved in that level of things, we need to go back and really find out what we do, what they do, you know, what the right kind of people to put on the committee, there's a lot to it. And so I, you know, while we're not there yet, I felt that, you know, if any of us have a chance to sit in with people who've gone through this. And one of the districts, it's a technical school, their school committees, I'll make up the number, but it was something like thirty-five.
Regional?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so they have, they have to sell it to all of those.
Basically, nothing gets done.
No, they got through, they got it, they got it through. And another thing that you have to do, and this goes back to the ethics, you have to have a support group from outside. It can't be school committee and, you know, people within selling the thing. You have to get another group that's independent of all that ethically.
Alumni association.
Whatever, you know, you know, it's often, you know, this political block, if you will. So there's a lot to that, and I won't belabor the point any longer, but I think it's really important as we continue through the process that we understand how it works, and that if we get closer at some point, you know, in months and years to come, that we really know what we can do, what we can't do in terms of ethics. Other meetings and groups?
I went to the South Row PTO meeting last night. That's an impressive group, I have to say. Almost half the people in attendance were faculty. And the fourth grade, two of the fourth grade teachers came and talked about the new science curriculum. And it's almost a backward model, where they do the experiments first and then learn the vocabulary, and the kids are just eating it up. And they're seeing success from kids that they never saw. They're, they're just, it's just revolutionized some of the students in that grade level. And they've, you know, done their usual pumpkin fair and fundraising. They raised over three thousand dollars just having donations, just sending out a letter to parents saying, "If you don't want to buy candles, don't want to, you know, consider sending us a check," they raised over three thousand dollars. The other meeting I attended was the McCarthy PTO, which is another solid group, and I'm going to throw this out there, they are planning an adult-only bingo night. And it's supposed to be a lot of fun, they got the idea from some other group, and they're going to bring it in to Chelmsford, and it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. Bring your own food in, you know, anyone can bring what they want and order pizza or whatever.
It's thirty minutes after the school day, so they can bring.
No, they're, it's an adult-only event, so you can imagine the beverages will flow. So it's going to be.
Is this something that they might do on a regular basis?
That's what they're hoping, if it's as successful as the one was that a couple of these parents attended, they're thinking it's going to be irregular for them, you know, maybe on the line of Taker-Chelmsford, but a little more, you know, competitive.
Yeah.
It'll be a lot of fun.
I saw it at work, Lowell Catholic did that when Quinn was principal or president or whatever he was.
Yeah.
And it's interesting.
They said it was just so fun, and the parents were so vested in it. It was a great evening, and they went on and on, and we're like, let's do it, so.
I had a couple, I went to, the CPAC had their second meeting, and Jay was there, and he spoke to the group about the role of CPAC, that he did a great job. I spoke briefly about my experience back when my daughter was in school here, and my wife was involved with CPAC. And then they kind of went off on their own, and they kind of, just getting themselves organized. And I think at this point, they have a nominating committee altogether, they're going to try to do elections in January, work on their bylaws, and hopefully be up and running by the spring. So, you know, it looks like they're heading in the right direction at this point, which is, which is great. I went to the council schools meeting, and it was well-attended. A couple of things that they were interested in is when, if the school calendar is going to be changing for next year, they wanted to know when that decision will be made. It's probably planning summer vacations already. He talked a little bit about elementary school principals and the workload that they have, and maybe being able to provide them some help. But I know Jay and Linda went in and helped out a couple classrooms in, was it South Row? Jay was a PE teacher for a day?
I taught a little PE classes at South Row.
What was the game you had to play?
Steal the bacon.
Steal the bacon.
They didn't know what steal the bacon was.
Yeah.
Do you have steal the bacon?
Provided.
Yeah.
But just to show you, this was, they went in just to provide some time for the principals to get around the building and see the teachers, which, you know, kind of shows you the workload that they have. Talked a little bit about the results that we heard about from the middle school survey, and they wanted to know as a group, you know, what they could do in terms of providing any kind of programs or anything. And then one of the things that came up, which I'm not all that familiar with, is that a lot of schools go to the garrison house, and in the past, there's been a budget align item to pay the person at the garrison house, and that, for some reason, that was taken out of the budget. And as a result, they almost weren't able to go because there was nobody there.
They were scrambling.
They were scrambling, but, you know, so I don't know.
Yeah, I forgot to follow up on that after the meeting, but I'll mention it to Linda afterward.
All right. I went to Harrington PTO, and it's just a younger group, so they just kind of get started. They have a lot of questions, but they're doing all their fundraisers. And unfortunately, I can't go to Senna's tomorrow, Thursday night, because I have my own parrot teaching conferences. But one of the questions they have, and I've heard this a couple of times, is they want to know when the budgeting process is going to start. And I think what they're looking for is to be able to come and listen in earlier rather than later, instead of waiting till everything's already on the table and not having any say to be able to come in at the beginning and say, hey, this is what we're thinking from our part. So I've heard that a couple of times from a couple of different groups.
We'll cover Senna for you tomorrow night, if you'd like.
If you would like, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is Senna tomorrow night or Thursday night?
Saturday, Thursday night.
It's Thursday night, Barbara.
All right, let me find.
Just, can I jump in for two seconds? So just a couple of things, I think it's going to be the first meeting in December, the third is when we'll probably bring forward the school calendar for the next year, so we will start talking about that. And we'll also provide kind of a draft calendar for budgeting, and then we can distribute that to the PTOs and the schools as well, just so that they know kind of an outline of like when we could have some public forums to talk about budget.
Right, and that's what they want.
We told the groups we would do that last year, so we'll at least bring that calendar forward so that they have the information.
Great.
The next meeting in December.
Seven?
The.
Yes, seven.
Okay.
The only, scheduling-wise, meeting-wise, I know I'll talk to Al, but I do want to schedule one of the two meetings in December for a good chunk of that agenda to be on the facility planning and the prioritization work, because that is going to be a good chunk of work. We can certainly schedule kind of a review of goals at the next meeting, like what transpired last year, and talk about school committee goals for the coming year. I don't know, scheduling-wise for you, will we bump this meeting to, and I appreciate that, to this week? We technically have the third Tuesday meeting next Tuesday, but it's the day before, the day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, so I don't know if people are traveling, for your information. I got everything on this agenda that I really needed to cover for this month. If you are traveling, you, you know, I'm not going to have anything significant for next Tuesday. I totally leave it up to you if you want to meet or not. But either way, I think we should carve out those couple meetings in December to really talk goals, to talk the ten-year capital plan, and, you know, calendar and budgeting, and get started. So I leave that totally up to you with your will.
So we do like the first Tuesday in December?
Well, yeah, we're back on regular schedule, so it's the first and third Tuesdays.
You're proposing to skip the twenty-first, or we're meeting the twenty-eighth?
No, we're meeting the twenty-first.
We are going to meet the twenty-first.
That was our meeting. So we can meet or we can't, it's up to you.
Okay.
But our next meeting after that is the first Tuesday in December, we're back on regular schedule, so it's the fifth.
Yeah.
So we'd be the fifth and the nineteenth. I don't know what people's travel plans are around the holidays.
I think that's a great idea.
I just throw that out there.
I could use the prep time, but I'm not traveling.
You'll be busy anyway, probably. Thank you, all right? I mean.
Oh, that's that night?
Yeah.
If there are no pressing needs, I mean.
No, I mean, it's a family time, I will, everybody will be preparing food.
You don't need a motion for that, it's just a change.
We'll probably do a motion to just cancel the meeting on the twenty-first, and that way we can update the calendar online, and then the next time we meet will be Tuesday, December fifth.
So I make a motion that we cancel our meeting for the twenty-first, and then pick up the regular schedule as of the first Tuesday in December.
Second motion.
Any discussion of motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any abstention, a negative vote, none, five, zero? John, did you have anything?
I did not.
Okay, Sal, did you want anything?
I did not.
One thing that I missed, they came up with the social, emotional things, some, and this is something to consider, I don't know whether it's widespread it is, but a lot of grandparents are raising kids now.
Yeah.
And there are districts running sessions for grandparents. And maybe we get a sense of whether there's a need for it here. I mean, I suspect it's not as widespread in some districts, but I bet you it's here.
Oh, it is, yeah.
I just thought it was an interesting thing, kind of a support.
There are a lot of scenarios that are tugging that maybe weren't as prevalent as they are now. I think that, you know, one of, one of the big issues, and it's a, it's a big emotional pull, and I think Dr. Parks agreed, you have parents who both work and depend on that paycheck, you can't be calling them to come pick up their kid when there's a problem, but you have to call them. You may not call them to come get their child.
Yeah.
The parents have to be notified, and I think that might be missing in some of these situations. You have a kid who gets in trouble every day, every day. What do you do?
It's hard.
It is, it's.
Because the emphasis is not on punishment.
Right.
I mean, that was clear, I don't know, we weren't into things.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's not just one.
No, and a point of discussion that came up down there is that for health reasons as well as other reasons, you shouldn't deprive, we went through this in Chelmsford, they shouldn't be deprived of recess. But if it's the most important thing in the.
But that doesn't mean you take it away, just because it's the most important.
No, but you have to do something.
Yeah, I think you do.
So.
But parents have, parents have to be involved in that.
Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to mention, and one other thing that's, because I participated the other day, we were, where were we? We were giving out dictionaries at Harrington. Well, the reason I said, where were we, because we're going through all of them. It's more of an important activity than you might think. First of all, when, we always ask when the seniors come to Rotary, do you still have your dictionary? And they all, you know, I won't say all, but a lot of them do.
Yeah.
It's, one thing, they don't get that many gifts.
Right.
And it's, for us, it's a fairly significant gift in terms of money. And it's not just dealing with words, because the back of it has presidents, states, all this information. And I noticed in one of the rooms that they had their own classroom set for whatever things that they do. It's also good because it takes people who are not in education into the classroom, get a sense of what's going on. And I just enjoyed getting back in, because the kids, they get so excited. So I just wanted to mention that that's going on, and it's one of the variety of things that Rotary is trying to do to be supportive. So anyway, any other things that we should get out on the table?
Couple of quick questions, status on the Cubbies, the modules?
Oh, yeah, good question.
What's the status on those?
I can't tell you every single school right now. I was at Senna School yesterday, and so they're up at Senna School, they look great. I'll actually email you out some pictures. Since being back, I have not made it to all the elementary schools, but Senna's were up, and they looked great. The window shades went in at some point while I was gone. So I don't know, it had to be one of those two days when school wasn't in session, and I know they were also into balance the HVAC systems in the schools, so there's a lot of work that was done. I know that they were going school by school, Senna happened to be the first one that they got done. They look great. I'll email you. I'll take some pictures just so that you can see them, and then I'll email you the schedule, but what?
I have pictures.
Oh, Linda will email you pictures. They're all scheduled to be in by Thanksgiving. So by the time people return from Thanksgiving, if they're not done, all schools will be done. So that was good, the window shades are in. The, we just talked this morning about the, what do you call it, the, I drew it up blank, the storage systems for the closets. Brian is taking care of watering those. So all the little last-minute adjustments to the modular classrooms are in progress.
And the other question was, bus passes are all out now? I, you know, I saw emails about the parking lot at the high school and kids getting ticketed because they wouldn't have parking pass, because they didn't have a bus pass, and they couldn't turn in. Is that all settled now?
To my knowledge, bus passes are, unless that happened, was, bus passes are not out, but the issue with the high school was resolved.
Okay.
As far as the bus passes. So the high school now knows who is supposed to have a bus pass, or what do you call it, a parking pass?
Parking pass, right.
And who isn't, so that, yeah, so that issue's been resolved. But is, and again, do you want to jump in on the bus pass thing, or I can?
So we're almost ready to go to presses with the bus pass. They're going to be a little different this year, they're going to have a little more information, and so it's taking a little longer. It's going to just not be the name of the school, but the name, the school, their bus, their time, a little different color for the kindergartners, so it's a little more. We've sent, we've ordered the stock from the printer, we'll be printing them here, and we're just fine-tuning, there's about thirty-nine hundred riders, and just going through that final check, do we have everybody? Because you know, if you miss somebody, we don't want to do that, and we'll get them out.
Next couple of weeks, or so.
Hopefully, if it all, if we get the kind of stock in, and I'm feeling more comfortable with the data, we'll go.
A couple of big things for us this year that's just new. So this is the first year that we actually took the kind of routing and the scheduling in-house. So we're seeing the data like we've never seen before, as far as having access to it and be able to, Linda's got the Cubbies up.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Screen for you.
It was really nice.
Nice, they're made of metal, and.
Skeptical, I was very happy.
Yeah, they actually, they're powder coated, so they match the trim in the buildings.
Oh, hooks with the coats, I guess.
Yeah, they're underneath the top shelf, so you can put the lunch bags on the top of the bottom shelf, and the little hooks are in there, so. No, they look, that's one sample of them, so they look good. But on the buses, so again, we just have much more access to the information at this point in time. It's going to be a whole kind of year-long process to figure out how we want to move forward with it. You know, there are certain things in the past that have just happened, so like, it's almost been assumed, anyone who was over the mileage requirement was just automatically loaded into the system and assumed that they were going to take a bus. Well, now that we're actually, you know, trying to streamline some of the bus routes, we've got a lot of students in the bus routes that don't necessarily take the bus, they just happen to live, say, over the two miles, so that they were always entitled to if they wanted to. So we're going to need to come up with some kind of a system where anyone taking the bus, whether you have to pay for it or don't have to pay for it, just have to go through, just kind of filling out an online form to say, yes, I want the bus, and no, I don't. Because there's a lot of kind of, you know, dead information in the, in the system that we're trying to weed out. We want to be able to, in the past, the bus passes didn't have unique information on them about students, but we want to be able to kind of have the pickup and drop-off and times and everything on the ticket. So we wanted to give it plenty of time to be able to let the routes kind of work themselves through, so that when we actually print that on the ticket, we don't have to, two weeks later, you know, kind of reprint a new ticket. So, there's a bunch of that, just kind of first-year startup stuff that's just taking a little bit longer than we wanted. No one has been denied, you know, access on a bus. We've kind of worked through the kinks, I think some of the other positive aspects of this is within X2, the student database system, there's a little field in there where you can actually go in and all the bus information, as far as your pickup, stop and time and stuff, is loaded into X2, so parents can actually go in and check their run and their stop. This is the, the first time they've been able to, to do that. The schools find it very helpful, because then they can run bus lists right out of their, their system. It gets updated if we have to, you know, make a route change or whatnot. So, the, the first year is a work in progress, but I do think we're close, so, you know, right after Thanksgiving, that should be happening. But it has not affected anyone as far as not being able to ride a bus or anything. I do anticipate when the bus passes go out, there's going to be a group of kids who don't get them, who, there'll be a mad dash to come pay, you know, for, for a bus pass to go forward. We'll work with the bus company to have there be some kind of a period of, you know, kind of enforcement and, and getting people to get a bus pass, be on the right bus, and make sure that they've actually paid if they're, if they're required to, but.
The issue with the high school is, the parking is that the kids are waiting for their bus pass to turn it in.
So, they get a parking pass.
To get a parking pass, so there was a lot of frustration with both the kids who drive and the parents, and then there were some issues having to locate the person who's in charge of those parking passes, and, you know, they've got a job within the building, so they're not always in the same spot, so.
He's had to miss.
Yeah, he's had to miss.
No, I know.
But he, you know, he's just not in one place at, at one time, because he has a job that requires him to be everywhere.
So, as long as it's resolved, I mean.
Yeah, it will get there.
I just want to thank the town side once again for all the work that they've done supporting us with the portable classrooms, and also, I think it's safe to say that town support in terms of getting the schools open when we lost power was, was important, because we were having trouble getting the schools open, because they were sending some of the power units north of here, which was badly hit, but, so, the town side and Jay and others worked very hard to get the power on, so we could open. So, again, they, they've helped us in so many ways, I just wanted to mention it again.
No, and for the viewing audience watching too, I mean, that, there was a tough storm that we had to deal with, communication was difficult, because a lot of people's primary information or communication sources were down, if, if, you know, home phones weren't working or whatnot. And we did receive some feedback from parents that would say like, "Well, I didn't get the connected message" or whatnot. And a lot of that is because they probably have their home phone number listed as the primary number in X2, if they subscribe to Comcast or something like that, if their phone system was down, they're not going to get it. So, we will be sending out some, you know, kind of reminder information to parents as we get ready for the winter with snowstorms.